All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:04. I need someone to make a motion to accept the agenda.
No moves.
Check it out.
All right. Any changes or anything we need to discuss beforehand? I don't know of any.
I don't think so.
All right. So hearing none, all of those that accept the agenda, please press your green button. If you don't like it, press your green, red button, please.
Aye.
Thank you, Angela.
Bill's hand is up.
Yep, that's great. Mike, you're giving me a thumbs up? All right, perfect. Okay, so we have an agenda, thank you. Okay, the next one is communications with parents, citizens, and staff. I haven't seen anything in the last week or so from anyone. So, and is there anyone here to speak with us tonight?
There's folks here for our presentation. I can tell you that most of the let's talks that I got were within the last 48 hours with mixed reviews on whether or not to have a distant learning day.
Oh. Well, what's the first one that we, right?
Right.
Where we called it, instead of calling it a snow day?
Right.
Okay. Let's see. All right, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Barbara? You're, there you go.
I'm going to need to pull something off the consent agenda, is this where I do it?
Yeah. Yes.
It's, okay, then I have something to pull off the consent agenda just to correct minutes from the January 13th meeting.
All right, so you wanna pull the minutes? Anybody else wanna pull anything else?
Yeah, can we pull up personnel, please?
All right, so, I've got some feedback going on in there.
Oh, that's probably my heater.
Okay. So, at this point in time, hearing no other pull offs, let's go ahead and accept the, approve the consent agenda with just the orders and the monthly financials. Motion?
Did someone second?
Derek looks like he's seconding. Okay? All of those that approve the consent agenda for orders and monthly financials, please press your green button. Otherwise, press your red button for no. Mike, you're giving me a heads up? Yep, sir. Thank you. Barry, are you giving me a thumbs up? Everybody turned it off before I got a chance to look at everybody. Okay. Consent agenda passes. Let's start with minutes. I need someone to make a motion on the minutes, and then we can go from there. Barbara, you wanna make that motion?
Yep. Do I need to say anything, or just say I need, there's an amendment to the minutes?
I think what you wanna say is that you would like to accept the minutes with a change, and tell us what that change is, please.
I would like to accept the minutes from the, it's the January 13th meeting, and with the change that they say January 6th, and they should say January 13th.
Probably a good idea.
I hope it's not, I hope it's not controversial.
Anyone wanna second that? Okay, Derek seconded. All right, discussion. So, I think the discussion is that we wanna change them to say January 13th instead of January 6th. Everybody okay with that? If you are, please press your green button. Otherwise, red button. Can you keep them lit up for a minute for me? Because apparently I'm old and I don't, I'm not looking as fast. Perfect. Bill, are you giving me a thumbs up?
Yes, I'm still looking for the green button.
It's down on the.
Reactions, right?
Under participants, you can see all the little reaction buttons. Okay.
Lori, just so you know, I think they go away on their own now.
Oh, do they start to be faster? All right, lovely.
Because we can't click on or off anymore.
All right, perfect. So, minutes passes, thank you for that. Personnel, Kevin, since you wanted to pull them off, do you wanna make the motion to approve the personal changes so that we can talk about them?
Sure.
All right. Someone said, wanna second that?
I moved.
Thank you.
No, I lose it again.
All right, so.
Kevin said, "I'm not sure." Did you say, "Sure, Kevin," or "I'm not sure"?
I think he said, he did say, "Sure."
Okay. I know he said the word "sure," okay.
Okay, so Kevin, did you wanna discuss anything with personal changes, or did you just wanna ask general question? Oh, I think he's frozen.
I think he is too.
Okay.
I think we lost him.
Yeah, I think we lost him, because.
Hopefully he leaves and comes back.
All right, well, while we are waiting for him, why don't we table the personnel changes until he comes back, hopefully? Since it was his question? And we'll move on and do the presentation on restorative justice.
Okay, so the board had asked for a presentation on restorative justice, and it's really restorative practices. Kevin is coming back now, if you wanna do that first.
Oh, okay. We'll give him a second. Hey, Kevin? Oh, you're muted.
I said, "I'm sorry, I'm having a terrible time connecting tonight."
No, that's okay.
Sid on me a few times.
We were holding off, so did you have a specific questions, or did you?
Yeah. Ellen Knapp is listed incorrectly as an OV teacher, so that's the.
No, it's correct. She's Otter Valley Unified Union School District employer.
Oh, okay. All right, that's fine. And then the other thing is that I just wanted to say, we're losing a lot of experience. People who have devoted decades of their lives to the district, and I wanted to express my appreciation for them.
Yeah, there's a lot of talent there.
And I'm gonna go backwards. Kevin is correct. The whole list is Otter Valley Unified, so I'll have that changed to say Nashabe. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other?
That was it for me.
Any other questions about the personnel changes? Okay, hearing none. All of those that approve the personnel changes, please press your green button, or give me a thumbs up, please. Perfect. Okay, and the personnel changes passes, thank you. Now we'll start our restorative justice.
Thank you. So, tonight, we have, the board had asked for a restorative practices overview, and so tonight, we have Megan Martin, our social emotional learning coach, Jed Pauls, the guidance counselor at Lowthrup Elementary, and Kristen Ains. I haven't seen Kristen, is she on the call, or Jed? Oh.
Both of them ended up having kid-related concerns. I'm a Lone Ranger.
And then Christine, Kristen Hubert, our curriculum director as well. And Megan just put a link in the chat to what she's going to present. Kevin, since you came back on, are you able to access that link, or should I repost it?
Like Bill, I always have to teach myself this stuff every single time.
Yeah, go down to chat at the bottom, and there's, and Megan, I'm gonna let you be able to share, or I can share, but.
Oh, I don't see anything on my chat.
Okay, we'll repost it for you. Hopefully you do now.
Okay, thanks. Actually, was there all along, I just had it covered up with the participants list.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now we're okay.
Jean, you shared a link to a puppy love friendship story.
Well, that's really funny. Well, mine's very interesting, but we'll, we'll go back to Megan's for right now.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna give a quick presentation on restorative approaches, and then sort of what we're doing in RNESU as our, as our goal with restorative approaches for this year and for next year. In the link I just sent you, it'll, it'll bring up a Google folder that actually has three separate files within it. So, one is an example of a circle lesson, which we're gonna do hopefully tonight, if I have some volunteers. One is my slides for this evening, and embedded in my slides are links to sources. And then the last one is a handout with more research, references, resources for you guys to check out if you're interested. So, I'll share my screen. So, if anyone has a question, feel, feel free to pipe up, or you can save it till the end, that's up to you. But when I'm presenting, it's hard to monitor the chat or, or see people, so you'd have to speak up if you wanted me to acknowledge you before I was finished. So, the what? What is restorative approaches? So, we are working with John Kitta, who is the Restorative Approaches guru for the state, and in his guide that Vermont AOE put out, this is his definition. Restorative practices provide meaningful opportunities for social engagement that foster empathy and mutual responsibility for the well-being of individuals in the community. Proactive practices intentionally build trust and understanding within the community to ensure a healthy supportive climate and environment. When things go wrong, restorative practices engage those affected and create space so that individuals and communities can effectively identify, understand, and address harms and needs. And this, this model facilitates healing. So, in a nutshell, really, restorative process, approaches, processes, restorative justice, whatever framework you're looking at it in, is about providing opportunities for a community to come together and, and to heal, and be supportive of whatever culture they're trying to build, and whatever that environment might be. And in different capacities, this looks different, right? Restorative justice in terms of the criminal justice system looks very different than how restorative justice, restorative approaches would work in a school district. But they all sort of fall under the same umbrella, where the goal is to create a community that facilitates healing. So, how does this look right now in RNESU? So, our goal is, for the restorative approaches team, is to create this foundation of classroom circles. So, classroom circles are this beginning layer of a restorative approach. And the goal of a classroom circle is to cultivate a culture where everyone feels like they belong. So, everyone in the classroom would participate in a classroom circle. It's a voluntary experience, and it gives everybody the chance to feel heard and respected. So, circles emphasize this feeling of fairness through understanding, and they include everyone in the classroom. It's really important that we, we remember that the point of them is, is voluntary and inclusive. So, you would always invite everyone in the room to participate in the circle, and then have no consequence for somebody that's not willing to come into the circle at, at that time. So, within RNESU, we're focusing on building the capacity for classroom circles. And we would like to do this because we wanna see an increase in community and school culture in a positive way. So, for right now, our, our, our use of this program district-wide is for community building, not for a restorative approach. We're, we're not there yet, but eventually, that is, that is the goal. So, circles will function as outlets for dialogues on partnerships, community, and individual feelings. That, that is what they're acting as right now, and they're not being used to reprimand any sort of behavior. So, some examples of the way you might see a circle in the classroom, I mentioned we're gonna do one tonight at the board meeting, if I have some volunteers. But they would just be like general get-to-know-you-type questions, especially if you're a classroom that's new to circles, or it's the start of the school year, you know, and age-appropriate, of course. So, if you're within an elementary level group, you might start off with, like, "What's your favorite ice cream?" And everyone gets the opportunity to go around the circle and share. While that seems kind of silly, the point is that you are building the environment in your classroom very mindfully, very explicitly, where everyone's getting the opportunity to share their feelings. So, the more that we're practicing that and explicitly teaching that through the circle, the circle guidelines, the hope is that you can, you know, branch off into some bigger, bigger topics. What makes us feel safe in our classroom? How do we get along outside on the playground, right? Like, those topics that are a little bit more vulnerable for kids to talk about, but within that circle, circle structure, we have built this community where it's okay to share your feelings, talk about how you feel, and be validated in a circle setting. So, the why? Restorative justice promotes values and principles that use inclusive collaborative approaches for being in a community. These approaches validate the experiences and needs of everyone within the community, but particularly those who have been marginalized, oppressed, or harmed. These approaches allow us to act and respond in a way that is healing rather than alienating or coercive. So, we're not quite at, at the point right now where we'd be responding in a way that's healing rather than alienating or coercive, because we're not using restorative justice or restorative approaches right now to, to reprimand or for discipline practices. We're using them to build community. Something that's really valuable from this is, you know, being able to provide a voice and validate everyone who's in the classroom when we have data that shows that sometimes our students that are marginalized don't have access to that same level of voice as other students. So, another why? If anyone is familiar with the ACES, ACES survey, this is the Adverse Childhood Experiences Survey. School connectedness and school engagement is actually a protective factor. So, ACES is looking at adverse childhood experiences or traumatic events, things like divorce, substance use, death of a parent, sexual abuse, incarceration of a parent. And many people have at least one ACE score. But the more ACE, ACES you have, the more likely you're gonna have a poor developmental trajectory. Right? But the ACES indicate things that are protective factors. Obviously, a supportive home life is a protective factor, but I always find it really interesting that school connectedness is a huge protective factor for kids. It's in the top four of the protective factors based on the ACES research. So, what we know about connected students, they're more likely to engage in healthy behaviors. Strongest protective factor to decrease substance use, school absenteeism, sexual initiation, violence, and unintentional injury. And then, again, it's the second strongest protective factor after family connectedness for mental health and suicide ideation and attempts, which also would then indicate that our students are more likely to succeed academically. So, when we look into the how of restorative approaches within RNESU, it's, it's this tiered system. So, this triangle might look familiar to you if you're familiar with MTSS, and how the state has rolled out MTSS in terms of these tiers. Sorry, excuse me. We are at this universal part of the triangle down here, at the bottom two. We're working on building the classroom capacity for, for circles before we're able to extend up and work on things like repairing relationships, developing accountability. We need to have probably at least two years of a good solid community, universal practices before we're able to move forward. So, here's some key points about what dialogue circles have to offer. They create equity within the classroom, because they give every student the opportunity to be seen and heard. They create school connectedness, right? Circles create a sense of belonging and safety that makes it possible for students and staff to create a connection. So, I, I find this one really important, because it allows maybe a teacher that has a harder time naturally building connections with students. Circles provide a guideline for that, right? Like, it's very easy to follow a script and, and to create a sense of relationship, build a relationship when you're in a circle setting, as, as opposed to if you're somebody that struggles with doing that naturally. Circles benefit social emotional learning. They help students develop empathy, the capacity to listen. You have to practice taking turns. You have to speak when it's your turn, as opposed to who's blurting out. And then you also have to listen without trying to fix, help, or solve somebody else's problem. Attunement and assessment. Circles provide daily opportunities to attune each child and assess their readiness to learn. As, as you develop beyond, like, the initial circle sort of check-in and connection, you can ask how, how students are feeling and use that to gauge their day, offer more support. And then mindfulness awareness. Circles provide a big slowdown, which is an opportunity to bring students in your own attention to the present moment. And this is something that I think all of us probably could really benefit from, as being present in the, in the moment is becoming more difficult with the use of technology, with remote learning. There's a lot of things going on in our lives, and to take a few minutes and just be really present and listen to other people talk is becoming more of a skill. So, if you're thinking, like, holy smokes, RNESU has all these giant initiatives for social emotional learning, you're not alone. I've had lots of staff come and ask me about that. So, here's the sort of alignment of SEL within RNESU. We have restorative practices going on. We have our schools, all of our schools at this point have implemented, implemented PBIS and are working at the universal level. Some of our schools have, have moved up to the different tiers. Lowthrup is definitely leading the, the district in PBIS. And then responsive classrooms. So, all of these things encompass different components of social emotional learning, and they all come together to meet our goals. So, I like to tell people that they sort of overlap, and the more that we can do each one well, you know, the more holistic RNESU's approach to social emotional learning will be.
What's PBIS?
Oh, great question. Those darn acronyms. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Implement, oh my gosh, Intervention Systems. And it, it really is just about creating a positive school-wide culture that encompasses universal expectations. So, an example of this at Otter Valley is PRIDE, right? Where the, the acronym PRIDE, each, each letter stands for something, and the point is that students are able to talk, talk to you about what the letter stands for, they're able to uphold that expectation, and that there's common expectations for behaviors across the building. So, that's my very quick, brief overview. Jean told me I had about 25 minutes to, to do this all together. So, does anyone have any questions about the presentation?
It seems to me that it's, I'm getting a terrible echo, I'm gonna pull my earplugs out. It's, it's, it's based on a therapeutic model, and there's a lot of talk about healing and things like that. It's a presumption that everyone's in pain and it needs some sort of healing. That's my first question. And the second one is, how's it worth at the high school level in, say, a math class? Do you, is the teacher supposed to set aside 10 minutes to do this at a certain day? Or is it something that's repeated over the course of a semester? I just don't understand how it will work. Thanks.
Great question. So, for your first one, restorative practices and the, and the circle setting actually stem from indigenous peoples' practices of getting together as a group and talking about what's happening, connecting with one another, and validating experiences. So, while there's a lot of talk about healing, I think that sort of stems from the restorative justice approach, where, you know, it, the, the goal is to sort of create a sense of empathy and connection between a victim and a perpetrator, and, and help the perpetrator understand, you know, a level of empathy for the victim and what the harm that they've caused, and repair it, as opposed to, you know, you go away to jail and you serve, serve your sentence, and the victim's supposed to just sort of move on. So, I, that, I think that's sort of the message of healing, but in a school sense, it, the biggest component of this is it provides a voice to everyone who would be in the classroom. So, a great example of this is in my previous school district in Rowland City. We had a teacher that was really invested in circles, and she implemented circles in her second grade classroom. And I had a student there that, that did not talk. Pretty, pretty traumatic background, really, really struggled to connect. And every single day, every morning, she did a connection circle, and then they did another one after lunch. By March, that student was participating in, in circles, and it took him a significant amount of time. And that would be the only time that he would talk, right? When, when it was his turn during the circle, he would speak up and be, be a part of that group. And she did that just as an experiment, but that, that sort of sold her on that. I would not have been able to build a connection with that student had it not happened for this different approach. So, so I think there's a lot of value in that. Your second question on how do we do this at high school, that's a valid point. Circles take some time. So, currently, 7 through 12, they have this embedded into advisory. And Molly Nicka, who's in charge of advisory, puts out circle prompts with the advisory slides. So, advisors in the morning have the option to, to utilize a circle to start their day. And as OV is working on sort of tidying up and tightening their advisory system, the goal is to have circles be a part of that on a regular basis, as opposed to, you know, once in a while, it's just gonna be a sort of a set part of the, the schedule. So, teachers, so students would do that with their advisors in the morning.
You know, Megan, well, one thing I was thinking as you went through that, in addition to the inclusiveness that it provides, I think the sharing also provides a sense of familiarity. And, you know, sharing with other people, you get more familiar, you get more of a, a clear picture of who this individual is, maybe, you know, what means something to them, what they're made of, what moves them. And it, and it may dispel, you know, false impressions that you have. And I think that would also help with connection or supporting connection.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying, saying that.
Are there other questions for Megan?
Yes.
Bill, did I hear you say something?
Yes. Bunch of questions, really. Very interesting. First is, we have a restorative justice group in town that have had for years, but we apparently have not crossed the bridges towards each other, or know what's really there. And I would like to hear more about what practices are used, and also, what do we have, what do we know about how applications, how well it works?
Bill, I couldn't hear your second question. How well, what are used?
Is that too vague?
No, can you repeat the second question?
How well does it work, and how do we know?
Great questions. So, how does it, your first one, so I don't forget it, because, you know, short-term memory, you get five to seven minutes. I'm surprised we haven't crossed paths yet either. I'd be more than happy to branch out and, and meet with the local group and sort of compare ideas. Might be good for our committees, the RNESU committee too, to me. I, I had some conversations, holy smokes, her name is escaping me right now. Who was our substitute principal at OV last year?
June Sargent. June did a lot of work with us in the initial phases, yeah.
Your second question for how we're, how we're doing this is, right now, we're just encouraging teachers to use dialogue circles. We have some virtual accommodations for them too. They have resources like example lessons, a list of questions that they could ask based on grade level, all, all via Google folder right now. We didn't push this too hard at the start of the school year. I mean, teachers had training and PD on it, but it wasn't a mandatory expectation because of COVID, right? Like, this year's pretty extreme. I'm very interested in data. So, we are tracking this and looking at this based on our discipline data. So, the hope would be that we could eventually compare discipline data from years prior to starting circles within a school of the universal practices and years after. We have three of our schools that utilize SWISS, which is a behavioral management data tracking system, and two, Nashabe and OCA, just signed on to SWISS this year. But our, our biggest school OV has had SWISS for quite a few years. So, this would be a really interesting to see at OV. If we asked teachers, you know, sort of made it a mandatory that you had to do this in advisory, it'd be interesting to see what the discipline data at OV look like, you know, two years after implementing dialogue circles on a regular basis. Are, are we seeing a positive influence on our discipline data?
Derek, go ahead. Derek, you're, did you want to ask a question? You're muted.
Yeah, there. Yeah. The premise of restorative justice, you said, was, or at least the circle dialogues that you're talking about as the, as the first step, is that when things go wrong, you have this to fall back on as a, as a skill set. When things go wrong, is, is something that we're, as a board, we're, we're concerned about. When students are, when they go astray, particularly at the high school level, and then punishment kicks in. And, and my, what I'm gathering is that this is a long-term rollout where you're building those foundation skills for, at the elementary level, for students to get comfortable, to get the sense of connectedness, to be able to talk through things. It sets the stage for restorative practices to be embedded in those. It sets the stage for restorative practices to be embedded in those relationships that would result in some positive outcomes versus what we, what we have to fall back on is punishment, which, which breaks relationships instead of builds relationships. And on the high school level, oftentimes leads to adjudication where kids are gone rather than being connected. And, um, they disappear from our community until some future time when they come back supposedly rehabilitated or, or not, as the case may be. But I, I see a lot of positive value to this. I see it also taking a long time. I understand that there is a restorative justice component in our, in Brandon anyway, and that Otter Valley students are referred to that restorative justice activity as a, as a deference to adjudication. Is, is that sort of an end game with this? Or, uh, can you tell, tell me more about the larger, the larger picture?
I, I think that, you know, it, it takes at, at minimum, three years to sort of start a cultural shift. Um, and we're talking about a pretty large cultural shift, especially at our, at our biggest school, OV. So, so I think the long-term picture would be, we, we see things like, um, our discipline data decrease. We, we know, you guys are well aware, that OV has a HHB problem, you know, bullying problem. So we see our bullying investigations decrease. The counselors and I are, are tracking things like threats and suicide assessments too. So our hope would be we see those decrease. And our dropout rate is, is pretty high in comparison to other schools are similar in our size across the state of Vermont. So if we can utilize something that's as easy as sitting around in a, in a circle or in a Zoom square and, you know, having a few minutes to have a point of connection every day, that seems like a pretty cheap curriculum in terms of meeting a social emotional goal that could have positive long-term outcomes. Um, but it is that cultural shift, shift, Eric. You're right. It's, it will probably take at least three years, if not, you know, five, to sort of see a, a big wave if we do this with fidelity.
With fidelity is the key. And so I know that this is happening at quite a scale at, at Lothrup Elementary School. I'm not, I'm not tuned in to what's happening at the other schools as much. And we're under a state grant, a, as I understand, to, to tackle this as an initiative. What are the requirements in terms of, um, reporting back to them? And, uh, and, and that relationship, is that gonna continue? Are we giving the state data, uh, on this for replication purposes or what?
I, I don't know about replication purposes. We, we do have to report back. I just filled out our action plan, which is linked in the resources handout that you guys have access to. Um, so you can see the action plan that, you know, our team has developed for, for next school year. And like I said, we have some really bright spots across our district. So we have teachers that have, have really felt like, yes, this is great. I'm implementing it. Molly Nickah, who's in charge of advisories at the high school, really bought in. She's, she took it on herself to include that in the advisory agenda for all the high school teachers. We have these bright spots. Um, you know, I think the goal is just hopefully getting COVID a little bit more behind us and letting teachers take a breath before we add one more thing onto their plate. Because on, you know, on top of restorative circles, we had to add MTSS, you know, due to federal funding, and that, that's had a higher priority than this. So I think it's just trying to balance out all the, all the needs.
Yeah, and I would just add, um, kind of to Derek's point. We knew when we went after this grant, which was well before COVID, it was at the beginning of last school year, that the grant wouldn't be around forever, right? So our action plan was all about sustainability. And how do we go out and train the most people, get the most movement in every single school to potentially move the, the whole SU forward? And like Megan alluded to, and you as well, Derek, there are definitely bright spots, right? Lothrup happens to be one because they had far more people buy into the training in the very beginning than anywhere else. So you can kind of see because of COVID, some uneven, um, not participation necessarily, but implementation, because it's hard to roll something out right now. But, but our action plan and Megan leading the work, you know, even with our coach and grant aside, is really focused on the proactive side of it as opposed to the reactive. And it, you know, not necessarily even about bullying or HHB sort of things. When we look at some of OV's data, for instance, one of the things that students talk the most about is they need to be engaged. They want to make connections. They want to feel involved and have a voice in a part of their school. So restorative practices, dialogue circles, really allow, um, you know, us to focus on, across the system, K to 12, the acknowledgement that relationships are really central to our community, like RNESU community, that we do have an equity of voice. Um, you know, it doesn't matter if you're in a first grade classroom or a ninth grade English classroom. If you're a member of that community, your voice should be valued and everyone should be heard. Um, and it also allows us to kind of set that culture of high expectation and high support, right? Like, we want students to recognize that if something happens, if a mistake happens, this is about, you know, the with, we're all a community who, not this is what's happening to you, or this is what's happening for you. So it's really this like cultural or paradigm shift, um, that, you know, we're, we're working on that sustainability piece. And, and Megan's leadership here has been huge.
Bonnie, you got a question?
Sure, not a question, uh, just a comment to say that I, um, I applaud the efforts of the district to do this. One of the things that has struck me over the many years I've been in this business is watching over the last 15 or 20 years, the degree to which youngsters' lack of connection has grown. We have more and more, I would say it's probably most now at this point, of our youngsters coming to school with, um, with very few connections. Some of the places that they used to develop connections, you know, we had neighborhood schools, the kids lived in the neighborhood. They played ball together. They had little stereotypical language here. They had Girl Scout troops together. They had all those things. But they came to school with many connections already intact. We have so many youngsters now coming to school with virtually no connections. Um, I'm sure Jean and her team has a plan. Um, but one of the things I would like to see, because this work is so essential, is that, um, teachers don't necessarily get to opt out. I understand that the pandemic has put additional things, and I, I do understand all that. Um, but I would hope that at some point in the very near future, this just becomes an embedded practice in all of our classrooms. Because I would offer, you, you probably can't change the, uh, HHB problems we have at Otter Valley, at Otter Valley. You can make them a little better, you can round the edges off a little bit. But if we really want to change those problems, we have to be rolling up our sleeves and working very, very hard in our elementary schools.
I second that. Thanks, Bonnie. Uh, Barbara?
Yeah, um, I kind, I appreciate Bonnie, what you just said, because I was going to ask about what, uh, what goes into the training or if the training is, well, uh, mandatory or how, how it's determined who goes through the training. I mean, I, I assume the program works better the more people who opt into it or buy into it and, and go through the training. I, I can't imagine trying to implement this without having been properly trained. So I just was wondering a bit more about that.
Yeah, so, uh, the train that took place this year had to be virtual. Um, I led whole district faculty virtual training in circles. So I started off with a pretty in-depth presentation. And then I had about a million breakout rooms where different members of the restorative approaches team led circles virtually. So, um, it was, it was kind of a hot mess, honestly, with all the virtual accommodations that we had to do sort of at the last minute in preparation. But the goal for this year is to follow sort of that same format and have different members of the restorative approaches team take smaller subgroups to build the capacity for circles, because really, it should be done in, in very small groups where teachers get to practice running circles for themselves and, and feel a little bit vulnerable. Like, what do you do if you have a student that refuses? Do you, do you engage in that moment or do you let it go? What, what should that look like? And, and I really believe that teachers have to practice that in a safe space in order to be able to navigate that well with, within their classroom. So that is our goal for, um, August. And of course, that's dependent on what our, what our guidelines are. But hopefully, we'd be doing that in person in small groups.
But Barbara, um, just to back it up, the, the RNESU restorative, um, practices team has been training for a year and a half. We started last year. We've had a series of workshops. And so although Megan's talking about really supporting everyone with dialogue circles, our SU team had to do all layers of restorative practices. And, um, a series of, like Megan revised the action plan. You had to do a series of steps, check-ins, turn information into the state, um, you know, meet with your coach. Additionally, before we shut down, that was before March, right, Megan, Jean? We had all administrators, um, come and meet with our coach, and they got a one- or two-day overview kind of training, and then the world shut down. But so that's kind of where we're living with it right now.
Kevin?
Thanks. Uh, first, uh, I want to say it was deeply depressing to hear what Bonnie had to say about, uh, the community aspects of kids' lives eroding. There's a lot of sociological literature, you know, Robert Putnam comes to mind especially about how, um, community enterprises and clubs and, and involvement of all kinds is falling apart for adults. But you realize that it would have extended that much for children as well. And I, I think of, uh, my son and Mike's daughter and Greg's son, who's not, he's not here tonight. But, um, they've all known each other for, I think Mallory and Brian have known each other since kindergarten, if not before. And they, uh, you know, that being part of that community and knowing these friends for their entire lives is, is probably the best thing about growing up in Brandon. So the idea that we're losing that is, um, it's depressing. My question out of that is, listen to the conversation, seems like there are three things going on, or three goals for this. One is, is building communities in classrooms. And I think some of that can be taught. That's really the essence of good teaching. I think it's probably the most single, most important skill that, that good teachers have, in my opinion. Second would be, uh, encouraging children who are, for whatever reason, afraid or reluctant or feeling alone. And the third is a restorative justice element. Do you prioritize those in any kind of order? Or is, is, um, it's a plan to implement one after another, or is this something that's supposed to happen all at once? Thanks.
Sorry, my, my house is starting to sound like WrestleMania is happening downstairs between my husband, the child, the dog. So, uh, if you can hear the rest of my house, I'm sorry. So this has to go in sort of incremental steps. So if we remember that triangle that I, that I showed in the slideshow, we, we can't move towards the restorative justice component of it and addressing sort of discipline practices and behaviors until we have that community foundation laid. And that's something that our coach, um, who happens to be John Kitta, helps us to decide. So if I were to go to him, you know, this, this week and say, you know, John, we're moving ahead, we're doing great, I want to, but this, I think he would laugh at me. He said, there is no way that your district accomplished, you know, creating this, this school year. So it's sort of a slower rollout. The first one is that community building, um, of the universal circle practices happening across our district and within classrooms before we can move forward with it, with anything related to behavior or discipline practices.
Bill, you have a question?
There. Okay, this is very interesting. I'm pleased to hear the Putnam reference. And also Bonnie, I think, has got her finger right on it in terms of the external kinds of things we have to deal with. I don't think for a minute that we can solve all of these kinds of problems strictly within the walls and the constructs of school as we know it. And so the first part of my question is, huh, well, how do we reach out and make these things a reality? And the other question I have is this business of without reprimand, yes? Okay, let's think about that philosophically. And think about the former resident of public housing at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue got a piece of a reprimand. And apparently, nothing else was going to work. But you see, we have to teach socialization of children to live up to norms of society at the same time. And so how do we balance these kinds of things and make them effective? There are different roles, but they're both obligations upon schools.
So the, the point with the classroom circles is that even though we're not reprimanding, it doesn't mean that there's not a consequence for poor behavior that happens within schools, right? It just means that we're not at the point yet where we're using a restorative, a restorative lens to sort of solve that problem. So traditional discipline measures such as detention or, you know, it depends on which school you're in, but lose recess or you lose a privilege or whatever at the elementary level, those things would still be in effect. Same thing as if you needed like partner timeout in the elementary school, you would still, still do that at the classroom level. How, how we, how we do this at the classroom level is just with those dialogue circles. So we teach a lot of social skills through the dialogue circle. So if someone's unsafe outside at the playground, we can talk about, a, as a circle group in, in our classroom, what does it look like to be safe on the playground? And have every student share, you know, what it looks like to be safe or what it means like to be them, without calling out the one student who wasn't safe on the, on the playground, right? Like, everyone just got a chance to take a, take a turn and say what, what it looks like to be safe. And that kid absorbed all, all of, all of those statements and heard from his friends or her friends what, what it means to be safe without feeling shamed and upset that, you know, they were the ones that just caused this sort of level of harm. So I, I do think, um, while it's not traditional discipline practices, so, so to say that we're used to, we're still teaching accountability, um, just sort of indirectly in these, in these classroom circles. But again, you, you have to build that foundation. So are teachers gonna be able to accomplish that conversation through a circle in September? No, they're gonna have to start with like, what's your dog's name? You know, what's your favorite pet? And what did you enjoy about this math lesson? Before we can get to sort of those deeper level conversations, because they require a level of vulnerability and trust within the classroom.
So we're coming to an end of our time on the agenda, just to bring to your attention if there are any final questions. Megan, I think you did a fabulous job. Thank you for your patience and communication with us.
I, I did have an example circle prepped. I don't want to take any more time from the board meeting, though. So if, if you want to do it, I can, or if you, it would probably take 15 minutes. So, um, or, you know, if you would like me to come back a different night for you to try it out, I can, I can arrange that too.
It is in the handouts that you gave us as well. Reading isn't the same as experiencing, but.
Um, Becky should ask her question, though.
Um, it's more of a support to what Megan was saying. For kids who've had lots of aces, kids who feel shame when they do something wrong will continue to do those wrong things. And so by doing it this way and having their peers, you know, um, pipe in, it helps kids feel connected. And when you feel connected, you want to do better and behave better. And when you don't feel connected, you keep doing everything you can to be disconnected.
Laurie, you're muted, but we can tell that you're talking.
Yep, well, I thought I hit the button and then it didn't take. Sorry. So I just wanted to say to Megan, thank you very much for being here with us tonight. Um, I think that this is something that we'd probably like to dive into deeper as we move forward and do that circle and all the things that you had prepared that we couldn't do this evening. So we'll hopefully see you soon.
Sure thing, ma. My pleasure.
Thank you, Megan. Thanks, Kristin.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too. Okay, executive limitations monitoring reports, monitoring report 2.3, financial conditions and activities. So is this just to look at your interpretations or is this, no, this is the final, huh?
This is the final. And there was a change in number five, 2.3.5, in our interpretation. As Brenda and I went through the As Brenda and I went through the report, I had interpreted interfund differently than it was intended. I thought interfund was like the departmental budget. But it's not. It really is about, I gave it an updated example. For example, we can't use bond proceeds to fund the general fund, or you can't use one grant to fund another grant. That means by interfund. So I just wanted to point out that change in 2.5. But this does have evidence for you, and it has links to most of the evidence.
We have done this one before correctly. This is the second time around on 2.3 and 2.4. Okay. So I'm assuming that most people have the the time to go through this and review it. So at this point, because we have seen this one in a previous year, I'm going to open it up to anyone who has questions for Jean on 2.3.
And I have Brenda with us tonight as well, since this is her area of expertise. There were a couple of folks who gave me some questions today, which is great. I appreciate that.
Oh, Barbara, go ahead. Sorry.
No, I just raised my hand. So within 2.3 is 2.3.6, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I did send you, I don't know if you had a chance to read it.
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you. I I communicate, just to update a little bit, I communicated with Jean and with Lori about something that concerned me about 2.3.6. So I'll skip, but I have to then, so I have some concerns, and it concerns the the interpretation of timely versus untimely payment of invoices to vendors. And let's see, as a local vendor, there there's a bit of a difference in interpretation that I have to question, I guess, is what I'm doing here is that Jean, you did amend your interpretation. And we got the copy of that today in our amended board packet. I'm gonna just read that passage in case people didn't catch it, see it, read it. It's so the the policy is the superintendent shall not allow payroll and debts to be settled in an untimely manner. So that's the 3.2.3.6 policy. And the rationale provided is the district operates as a business and as such is obligated to pay employees and vendors in a timely manner. I think, Jean, the part that's in italics is the part that you added. So that's this following part. I interpret timely payments to vendors to be within 30 days of the product receipt or the invoice, whichever is later. End italics, the rest of the rest of the rationale follows. This is necessary to maintain positive relationships and get beneficial services and prices for the district. So as a local vendor, I'm going to present that I think it is not fair or that it makes much sense to say receipt of the product or the invoice, whichever is later. Because in the particular scenario, I'm going to that you know that I want to, there is a delivery of the the goods just before Christmas and about December 21st. But through somewhat convoluted, a little bit challenging process of invoicing from teacher to district or teacher to office to district and back, a lot of time can elapse, and in fact, a lot of time did. So I'm not even sure, but apparently the invoice that was delivered with the merchandise did not reach the district office. And as a result, the bookstore hasn't been paid, and it's now February. So the vendor, and that I think is too long. I think that there's it's not a reasonable interpretation to expect a vendor to have to wait that long, because somewhere along the process, the piece of paper isn't going as quickly as it needs to go to the right place so that the bill gets paid. I don't know the way around it, but and I also think it's a little bit much to expect the vendor to know all of those permutations so that they can, you know, work within a system like that.
So when Barbara had sent me her question today, which was great to get, it helped us cast our processes was was really a valid question. The we do have, we have to have, we have an internal manual, and we have to have that so that our auditors know that we're we're also, it's not just for the monitoring report, it's also so that we have appropriate processes and procedures. And no, it is an internal menu. Manual, we don't give it to our vendors. But the manual and the auditors require us to have three pieces before we can pay a vendor. We have to have the invoice, the PO, and the okay to pay from someone at the school that lets us know that it's the product's been received. All three things have to happen. The piece that fell apart in this particular situation was the delivery went directly to a teacher who wanted the order. Normally, the shipment goes to the school office. The secretary knows to take apart the order, to pull out the invoice, to give it to a teacher, et cetera. Didn't happen in this particular case. Teacher received the order, didn't actually tell the office you ever received the order until mid-January. So then things started coming together. And so it 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 will be processed because we have all the pieces that we need. But there can, with 400 employees, there can be that kind of breakdown, particularly with local vendors and relationships, et cetera, that can easily happen. We only, the other Barbara brought up a couple other points, which I thought were really valid as well. In this particular case, a purchase order, a PO was used. We do allow our administrators and administrative assistants to use a purchase card, which would be a more instantane, more like a credit card, a more instantaneous payment. And so I will be following up with principles to consider, particularly with our local vendors, using a purchase card as opposed to a PO when possible, which also would speed things up. But I did state that we're in compliance because I I believe that our procedures are in compliance. And there was a single incident that did not fall within the 30 days and 30 days. And it was based on a change in the process at the teacher level. So questions?
I'll have something to add. But but if somebody has a question first.
I was gonna ask a question if you're okay with that.
Go, go.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but if I I understand the breakdown that happened because it was given to a teacher, she didn't give it to whoever she needed to give it to to start the process. However, if the invoice being from a financial background, being in a situation where if I give an invoice to someone and I say net 30 days, if that does not, if if a breakdown happens and we're on day 29, and you've just barely received all of that information, or that starts coming together, is there a way to make payment on that almost instantaneously if you have, if you have all three pieces of information? Or does it, do you have to continue to go through? Or do you still have to wait the 30 days? Because you have all three pieces, now you have 30 days, is that what? Are you saying that once you have all three pieces, then you have 30 days to pay it? Or are you saying?
Actually received the invoice in the business office until today.
Okay, so, right, so you probably didn't even know it was out there. But the idea is, I guess, is my thought is, is that if 30 days is coming together, or if if a vendor realizes that they haven't been paid and they contact you, are you able to get all three pieces together? And then and then do you start it from the time that you actually get the invoice? Or, you know, so like, if you get the invoice now, let's say you got the invoice today, but it was from December, do you still take 30 days to pay from that? Or no, it's instantaneous, correct?
Next process, so that'll go right into the next run of checks.
Okay, okay. So so some of it is if is if you don't see a statement or you don't receive a statement that goes to the business office or something like that, that shows an outstanding invoice, you don't know where to go looking for it, correct? Or or the business office doesn't know about it?
Doesn't know to go looking for it. The school needs to be asking about it.
Okay, all right.
If I can just add a couple of things, we when we became a unified board, you'll remember, we kind of ran into this, and we were paying invoices monthly. And we said, this doesn't work, because if somebody actually sends us the invoice or the last piece of that payment, literally the day we run the orders, and they're automatically 30 days later, and they could have already been at the 30 day window. So we talked to you about doing orders every other week, and we've been doing that for a long, long time now, pretty much since we were formed. So one week is orders, one week is payroll, one week is orders, one week is payroll. So after payroll is done, and they're starting, the bookkeepers are starting to look to do orders, they go through their records to see what's missing, and they will start making contact to the teacher or to the school, usually to the school. They say, you know, I still have this PO, it's kind of old, did you get the information? Sometimes we get, literally the day we place the order, we get the invoice. So we have to, we can't just pay from the invoice, because we literally get the invoice before we get the stuff. So, you know, they kind of track that. When this came about today and the invoice was tracked down and found, because we got the okay to pay on January 21st, but no invoice. And that's an example. That was literally the day after orders were run. And so it would normally hit this cycle of orders, but we had no invoice. But we tracked down the invoice, and it will be paid in this cycle of orders. The other thing that we can do when that happens, kind of if this was an off week and meant we were going to be paying next week, we could call the vendor and offer to pay with a P card. So not only is there P cards, which are credit cards, MasterCards, I believe, not only are they at the school level, but the bookkeepers have them as well. And so in this situation, we didn't feel we needed to do that, because we were going to run the orders tomorrow and send it out. But that is another area so that we don't extend that timeline.
Bonnie, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I was just trying to put a little lightness into the conversation, that if somebody could create some sort of an app or something that would solve this, they could make a million dollars, because it's almost hours teachers working with local vendors that this situation happens. I probably 95% of the time I've been in this situation, the invoice is in somebody's purse in their top desk drawer, in the science cabinet, and the and it just, it just goes through the wrong channels, and nobody knows for several days that it's that anything's amiss. I know that doesn't help the local vendor, Barb. I know that.
No, no, I'm not taking, I wouldn't take issue with it. I agree with you. If there was an app, I would be all for it. But I'm gonna put in a couple more pieces of this puzzle, because, okay, so I'm a local business, or I run a local business. And I'm on the school board, so I see the orders that I sign, and I see an awful lot of things ordered from Amazon, which is not a local vendor. And I hope everyone is fairly up to speed on how big Amazon is and how rich its own its founder is, and that it's not doing a whole lot for our community. And I'd like to make the argument that I do something for the community and that the bookstore does something for the community, and we try. And to that end, I hand-delivered books the day before Christmas. In fact, my daughter found Heather Best and delivered her the books, because that is personal service from a community bookstore. But, you know, to advocate on behalf of my business right now, it's January, no, it's February, and it's really, really slow. And I need my bills to be paid. If I tried pulling this on a vendor, and I understand the process, because as you may recall, I had a bookstore before, and I wrote a letter to Dr. Mathis about this very same issue, maybe 20 years ago. Because it was a problem then, and it's a problem now. But I have to make the case for think local, support local. And I don't know exactly how to do that, and I'm wearing two very different hats right now. But it's not just about this bookstore. It's about there are other local bookstores in the area also to purchase from and other vendors to purchase from, local vendors. I I bring it up because it affected me, but I can only imagine it does affect others. I also know that the purchases made from Amazon are made instantaneously. Those are on P cards, and they get paid right away. They don't ship off the books until they've been paid. And that is a huge that's, to me, that just seems wrong. I really think that a local vendor should be paid, you know, quickly. And I I get that it's a system that involves lots of layers and protections and all of that. So there's no disputing that it has to be in place. But you know, the the it has to go to the office and send it to the teacher. And when the office gets a thing and they unpack it, I mean, the office wasn't unpacking it, because I was hand-delivering a bag. And, you know, why go through the middle person when you can go right to the to the person who placed the order? So taking that personalized piece out seems really sad to me. And when we're talking about community, Robert Putnam, you know, that's one way you keep community alive, is you honor and respect those kind of relationships between, you know, the small, the little guy and another little guy.
And the local stores also can, a P card, purchase card can be used at local vendors as well. This particular time, the school chose a purchase order. There's no reason not to use a purchase card, a P card.
Okay. Other questions about 2.3?
Another question, I just want to say Barbara couldn't be more right about Amazon.
Yeah, I don't buy from them that much anymore, actually. So okay, so then at this time, I would accept a motion to accept monitoring report 2.3, financial condition and activities.
So I'm moved.
And a second from Mike Lufkin. Okay, any other discussion regarding this particular policy? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor, please either give me the thumbs up or press your green button. All of those against, please press your red button. Okay, so there were two against, and everybody else gave me the thumbs up. So it passes. Or it's accepted. Thank you. All right, the other monitoring report that's in your packet is 2.4, financial planning and budgeting. This time, I'm going to ask for a motion first, and then we can discuss, which we should have done before, so. Anyone want to make the motion to accept? Derek is making the motion. Who would like to second that motion? Mr. Mathis. Okay, thank you. All right, so questions regarding 2.4? This is also another monitoring report that we have seen in the past once before. Were there any substantial changes, Jean, to this one from the last time that you pulled this together?
No.
There, she is reporting compliance in all areas. I believe.
I believe, yes. The other one, I did report a non-compliance in one area, I believe.
Any questions for Jean and or Brenda, as Brenda's here and helps do the, take care of these things? Okay.
Just to
Oh, sorry, Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, just to comment that this area of planning and budgeting is this area of, uh, planning and budgeting is particularly challenging uh, in the past year or so. And, uh, and looks like it will be in the next round too. Um, and I think that I think that Jean and Brenda and the, and the staff have done well with, with trying to deal with, um, credible projections, uh, in revenues and that sort of thing. Um, and hopefully our legislature will, um, find the wisdom in, uh, making timelines and think much more aligned that make much more sense for all the players, including the town and as well as the schools, but, um, I commend you for trying to keep all those pieces together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, then I would go ahead, uh, for a vote, all of those that approve or accept, excuse me, um, the, uh, report for 2.4, financial planning and budgeting, press your green button. Everyone has said yes, except for one. Okay. Thank you for that. Right, what's our time? We're about 15 minutes behind, I think we can do this. Okay, so we're, we, um, postponed doing our own monitoring report for 4.3, which is agenda planning. Um, so I would like to take the time to do that together. Um, I will, uh, read the policy wording and then I would love it if you guys gave me your input. So, um, the first one is to accomplish its job description with a governance style consistent with board policies. The board will follow an annual work plan that one, completes a review of end's policies annually. B, continuous, continually improves board performance through board education and enriched input and deliberation. C, provides a mechanism to record and save opportunities for improvements. And D allows the board to meet its legal obligations. So the question to you is, do we do this always, most of the time, some of the time, rarely, never? And, uh, please give a specific example for your response, please. This is in your packet also on page 38 so that you can follow along and, you know, it's hard sometimes to just hear me droning on. Anyone? So one thing I will say is that, um, we haven't had a com, um, a complete review of our end's policies annually because number one, COVID. Um, we are working on it. Um, I do believe that we are continually improving our board performance through, um, our education and through what we deliberate. It's for, I don't know, um, I think we're always looking for opportunities to improve and, um, we always meet our legal obligations, or at least I think we do. So, but I would defer to you guys, what do you think?
Okay, I'm going to sound like a broken record. But we spend way too much time in our own processes, tonight's an example. We've yet to talk about math scores since I've been on the board. I just learned tonight for the very first time that our dropout rate is unusually high for the state. It seems to me that the, uh, the issues that our children and our families face, we are not talking about because we're too busy talking about our own process. And, you know, that's why I vote no on every single one of these because it's the only protest I can make that we are wasting our time on, on our own document over and over and over and missing these absolutely essential facts about our district. Um, so, you know, once again, I just have to say that, that, uh, nothing on this document, it's satisfied me. That's it for tonight, thanks.
Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we're talking about agenda planning here. And, uh, in the header to 4.3, it says that that with a, with a governing style consistent with board policies, um, I think that we are doing those things. Um, we have, we have a policy governance style and we are in our governance sc- style is consistent with those policies. So if you have concerns about math, I suppose, um, you know, that would be a conversation with, with a curriculum, uh, supervisor, uh, math department, um, and those are, those are management issues. Um, and those are not within our purview, so.
Eric, I'm talking about the education of our children, come on.
Yeah, and there are people, and there are people that, and, and we are-
Please, both of you. I appreciate it, but, um, we can all have our points of view, uh, so.
Um, number three on that, uh, about, uh, recommending or requesting an item for board discussion by, uh, there's a process for that, if you wanted to change or, or add an agenda item. Um, that it speaks to, um, communicating to the chair no later than five days before the agenda is warned.
Yep.
Yep. Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, we tend to, um, so we put the agenda together usually, uh, the Monday before the packet goes out on Friday. So as long as everybody gets something to me before then, we can make sure that it goes on the agenda or gets placed on an agenda that makes sense. So, um, yes, that's, you can definitely do that.
I'm the chair.
Um.
Bill, Bill's trying to talk.
Oh, go ahead, Bill.
And, and a bit, uh, I agree with Kenna, is that I think we need to start looking at what our fundamental purposes are a little bit more closely. Uh, we went through this restorative justice, for example, and and we, and I wanted to ask the question of how much money did we really invest in our budget in this? What was it directly and what were the exact outcomes that were there? I feel like we could go a little bit more depth and I think that the nature of schooling within itself is going to have to change. COVID has taught us something that we didn't want to learn. Uh, we're going to have to have different ways of, uh, teaching and learning and I don't think we'll ever go back. And so I know that people, Cheney has been trying to keep the ship afloat and of course, that's the first obligation, but I think we need to look a little bit broader than what we have.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go back to, um, the policy, um, 4.3.1, which says the cycle will conclude each year on the last day of June, coinciding with the end of the school fiscal year so that administrative planning and budgeting can be based on accomplishing a one-year segment of the board's most recent statement of long-term ends. So I think that's talking about our work plan, correct?
Yes.
And we do have a work plan, every, it's, everyone sees it, um, each meeting and we do make tweaks to it as we go through, um, our meetings.
And then you do a retreat every August to plan for the next year as you ended in.
Okay. Um, let's see, so, and that, so that speaks to, um, the next one, number two, about the cycle starting in August, which is where we go, that's when we have our retreat and that's when we talk about where we want to go for the year. And I will provide a report of the board's work. I have not done that, um, but I will do that this year. Okay. Um, let's see. Number four, throughout the year, the board will attend to consent agenda items as expeditiously as possible. One member of the board can remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion. We did that tonight. So I think we can say always to that.
Laurie, could I go back to number two?
Sure.
As I'm reading it, it says the board will, uh, the board chair will provide a report of the board's work from the previous work plan and create a new annual work plan presented to the board no later than the last scheduled meeting. You do provide a, a report of the board's work in your annual report.
Ah.
What we do is we don't create the next annual work plan until August. That's the way this board has been structured. You don't do it in the spring, you do it in August.
Okay. 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 Superintendent monitoring, monitoring will be included on the agenda in accordance with the board's schedule. Um, we've been doing that actually, so we try and do two, well, we try to do one every two months, correct?
Right.
Okay.
For the change, you might want to consider changing your timeline in number two. When you create the annual work plan,
Mm-hmm.
that's, that's an area where you don't do it the way you wrote your policy.
Ah, okay.
That's up to you, but.
What does everyone else think?
I'd recommend that we change the June 30th date to August, as is our practice.
Okay. Anyone want to second that so we can talk about it?
Second.
I'll second it, Laurie.
Thank you. All right, discussion. So the annual work plan will be approved at the, um, do we want to say the fall retreat or the summer retreat, August retreat?
Yeah.
That's where we just, all right, at the, um, August retreat of the O V U U board. I'm just going to get rid of the by June 30th of each year. So it just says the annual work plan will be approved at the August retreat of the O V U U board.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Fine.
A question on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
That is, we may need to think about June 30th because, uh, if we're getting towards the end and we haven't, if, and we need extra expenditures for whatever the plan is, we're pretty late in the cycle.
What does everyone else think?
I don't think that what you discussed with the August retreat comes out of nowhere. I think that when you're talking your June reserves, you have a pretty good idea of where you want to go. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
But you can put it in the work plan at your, when you pause in August or you can move your retreat to June if you'd like.
Okay, so in reading this, I guess I look at it this way and tell me what you guys think. The cycle will start in August with the board's development of its agenda for the next year. The chair will provide a report of the board's work for the annual report, is that what that should say, Jean?
Yeah.
Report. And then, um, or part of the board's work from the previous work plan for the annual report, period. And then, um, I think we put our annual work plan together as a full board, we don't have a committee that does that, correct? And that's the way this reads.
Right. Right, so I think it's that you would be in consultation with the other board members and superintendent, you would create the annual work plan at the August retreat to be approved at the meeting following the August.
Okay. So we might have to clean up this, I think I want to clean up this language and then bring it back to next meeting.
That sounds good.
Everyone's okay with that? All right. Well, we pretty much know what we want to say, we just need to clean it up so that we can understand it.
Is it, is that a table on that one?
Yeah, well, so I'm going to table, um, well, uh, I don't know, yeah, I guess we're tabling it and then we'll bring it back for final review, um, in our March meeting.
That's fine.
How do we, how do we table it? We already did a, um, we already voted to have a discussion, so how do we table it once we?
Can we do that by consensus?
Actually, the people, the makers of the motion can withdraw them.
That's true, they can do that as well.
Yeah, I think that's cleaner.
All right, so.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And we will look at that again. Okay, moving on. We need to finalize our presentation for the annual district informational meeting?
Yes.
Jean, you want to talk to that?
I do. I'd like to start by, uh, pulling up the, um, presentation and have Brenda tell us how the houseways and means have changed our tax rate. Because I think that's really important in your, um, your presentation to the public. Brenda?
Sure. So first I want to start with, and I apologize if I am repeating, I can't remember who I've spoken to. But the fact that the houseways and means have already passed a bill is unprecedented. It has never happened before. Oftentimes before town meeting, there's conversations about adjustments to the yield, but never actually a bill going through, uh, as far as it has. And so, and, um, and the increase being as large as it is. And so as the yield goes up in simplest terms, that means it buys us more spending per equalized pupil for the same dollar. And so the original yield from the December 1st letter was 10,763. And after new and updated Vermont economic indicators, the, um, houseways and means have passed a bill to increase the yield to 11,385, which is great news. It is a swing of about 6% and it is also therefore a swing of 6 cents. That's the beauty of the yield being a dollar. So previously, the 10,763 was a 3% decrease, the 11,380, 385 is a 3% increase, it's a 6% swing. So what we are looking at right now on the slide, you can see it is our unified tax rate is actually going to go down um, 4 cents in rounding, so maybe 3 cents in rounding. Again, that's the unified tax rate, that is before we apply common level of appraisal. But even when you apply the common level of appraisal, because they're not jumping up and down like a heartbeat anymore, they're a little bit more static, you're still seeing a no tax increase or actually Goshen, a big tax decrease. And Jean, if you can scroll that screen up a little bit, so, thank you. So you can see, um, you know, Lester and- So thank you. So you can see, um, you know, Lester and Pittsburgh are looking at a level tax rate after applying common level of appraisal. The big winner this time is Goshen with a 12 cent tax decrease. Uh, Brandon, 3 cents, Sudbury, 1 and Whiting, 5. Nothing else on these slides have really changed. We have also prepared a uh, a draft flyer that we had talked about sending out to all voters. The annual report book has gone out, um, or it's in the printing, printing processes and will go out directly from the printers to our voters. Um, so that they meet them in ti- in, in time by statute before the annual meeting. We've met that requirement, so any flyer we do or any communication we do is um. Not compliance mode. It's certainly for information. But we do believe, again, because it is unprecedented, that they have already passed through the House Ways and Means bill at 11,385. And the news is so strong that um. Uh, my very first superintendent taught me never to predict the actions of a board. Probably means I should never predict the actions of the legislature either. But I'm going to go out on a limb and say they have a lot of desire to increase that yield and to lessen property tax burdens on the communities. And when the economic, Vermont Economic Indicators have indicated that their first numbers were too low, I, I don't see that they're not going to come through with a higher yield. I think this is a much more accurate picture of where we will land.
The governor spoke yesterday in his press conference about the houseways and means signaling the health of the education fund, and he was also supporting that. This is this is as good a prediction as the December 1st letter was. It's, it's pretty solid.
And I don't think we were wrong. I think we had really no choice but to prepare annual report on the December 1st letter, because otherwise you're just preparing it on speculation. At least that's something we can talk to. But the change is so dramatically different and much more positive that the sooner we can get that word out, I think the better.
Basically, the tax rates throughout all the towns are going down. That's the bottom line. And how do we communicate that clearly? Because it is different from the annual report. Bill?
Um, I would be somewhat cautious. About this, remembering that we've got 181 politicians at the Montpelier, each looking at a slice of that money going somewhere. And um, I think we should celebrate the good news, but at the same time, when we talk about it, we should be cautious. And remember also that they, they just came out with the teacher retirement bait shift. And that could have tremendous implications to these numbers as well. So I'm just being a little bit careful here.
Eric? Mary?
Yeah, um, a- along with Bill, I think this is great. I really do. I'm, I'm very encouraged by it, but I, I'm also a little um. Unsure about it in the sense that in the three years I've been on the board, this is the biggest positive jump in yield at a year which you would expect it to be the opposite of that. And the justification for that change is that there's unforeseen strength in the economy and the, and the ed- and the state education fund, which is kind of unexplainable unless there's, there's something that was supplementing that. That's a one-year, one-time thing. Outside of that, I'd have to say this kind of sets the table for expectation for next year.
I- if this helps at all, the December 1st letter is based upon a projection from the Joint Fiscal Office, which was based on the assumption that we would not, the state of Vermont would not receive the revenues it received. So that was the December 1st letter. The Joint Fiscal Office, J F O, after the revenues came in, then revisited the same calculations of the December 1st. So this is based on actual revenues and the J F O's calculation of those revenues following the same formula as the December 1st letter, but with updated information.
Right, I understand that, but I guess I'd have to question how those revenues could be real unless they were somehow supplemented by something, because the economy doesn't reflect that kind of strength. And all I'm saying is, again, it's like Bill, this is a positive thing and, and you know, you don't want to knock a positive thing. But I think it, it kind of sets the expectation then, if this is real, that the, the education fund is that healthy, the economy is that healthy, that next year ought to be a boom year, because it will truly be healthier with respect to the yield.
So I know that the December 1st letter is um, calculated based on a formula that is dictated in statute. That looks at Vermont economic indicators. I do not know which and what and where they all come from. That's um, far deeper than I could understand, but that is what's used in calculating the yield. Um, as Jean indicated, literally, I think 24 hours before we get the information about the House Ways and Means bill, J F O recalculated the December 1st letter based on the current economic indicators of Vermont. I can't explain exactly what went up or why. I do know that some of the things they said they had seen more growth than they had expected was in sales tax. So um, I can't answer that, that level of detail. But they had first calculated the um, increase to be 11,295. And then literally within 24 hours, I mean, at first I felt like I was catching snowflakes when I was rerunning these numbers. They came out with the House Ways and Means bill. And the fact that J F O, Joint Fiscal Office is, um, you know, doesn't write law um, and House Ways and Means does write bills and, and present them for law. We went with their number instead of the other. You're both absolutely right. It's not done until the legislature is done. It's not done and gone until the legislature is, is finalized. Um, but I, it is hopeful and um, I, you know, how the, the best question is how do we present this to our communities?
Yeah. And, and I guess my reluctance is to say it's, it's due to the, the strength in the, in the economy and the education fund, because I can't believe it's true. I can't believe it's true. How could I really present it as true?
Yeah, wha- what I thought I heard, Mary, was um. I thought I heard the governor say that the change to the yield was based on the increased revenues rece- received by the, received into the education fund. So it, I came away from that thinking that it wasn't a projection, and I, I can't begin to tell you why those revenues would have increased either, but I believe his statement was that they had increased. And so it sounded to me like it was already monies that were in the Ed Fund. Now, as Bill said, you always have to be cautious when you get 290, 300 politicians in the same place, because they have taken money from the Ed Fund before, and I guess they could again, though I think it would be pretty unlikely this year. So it sounded to me like it was more money in hand uh, that was leading them to increase this versus a projection of any sort.
Yeah, well, it's good news in any case.
Yeah, and I don't begin to be able to explain any of what I just said.
I, I do know that a piece of the increased revenues is the sales tax, particularly from online sales, which, you know, and nobody could go anywhere. I guess you saw a lot of that, and that's targeted for the Ed Fund. That was one piece the governor said. The December 1st prediction is only that. It's an anticipation. It's not final until May. This one is the updated anticipation, also not final until May. I have always felt since this budgeting process began that we're standing up there saying the emperor has no clothes, and this is the best guess that we've got. Right now, this is the best guess that we've got. It's the way.
If it comes out better.
Sorry, Bill.
If it comes out better than what we projected or what we saw here, then that's just, that's just ahead of the game.
This is one step closer to law than the, the December 1st letter, because the December 1st letter is just an announcement. This number has actually passed House Ways and Means.
So with that, um, we also have um. Shared with you in the packet a flyer that normally this board sends home. Sends to all the voters a flyer that includes information, and we shared with you a draft of, of this year's to see if there are any changes you wanted to make. Do you want me to try to pull it up? You have it. Do you want me to try to pull it up?
Jean, we don't normally send a flyer. We usually just send the annual report with this board.
No, we have, but we have sent a flyer in the past. Um. So I remember stuffing it. And by the way, if you do want to send a flyer, we're going to be asking for help to fold papers, which you can do at home.
So the original reason for sending the flyer was because we thought that it would be very hard to understand.
Correct.
Some of the things that were going on. I don't know that. I don't know that we need the flyer. Unless, because the, so the annual report is actually showing different numbers than, than what you just showed us. Is that the case, Brenda?
Correct.
Correct. The annual report is showing the yield as of the December 1st announcement.
Okay.
Thank you, Jean.
Yeah. So this is a part of the flyer that breaks down the budget for folks. I actually think it's an awful lot of words. I'd like to see us simplify it a little bit. But this speaks to um. The proposed budget. And cost by school. What's in the budget. Updated tax information based on, clearly identified as based on the House Ways and Means Committee. Bill? So tell us what you'd like. Bill, is your hand up?
I think that was up from before.
Yeah, take care of it.
His lips are moving.
Yeah, Bill, you're muted.
I guess I sounded better when I was muted. Putting in the red print uh. Looks safe enough. It, it does have all the cautions to it. Am I not correct on that?
Yes.
I will say.
I'd like to see where that economy is.
Um, I, I do appreciate there's a lot of words on here, but this does concisely put on two pages what it takes 43 pages to do in the annual report.
Good point.
Which is probably all that people want to look at in any case.
Right. Would the board like to send a flyer home?
If we send the fire home, I don't know that we need to. Can you roll it up? Because I can't see everything that's there. Right, okay, so the, the budget facts. I, I don't know that we need that stuff again, if that's the stuff that's already in the annual report.
It is.
Yeah.
So we could keep the grid on the top. Maybe keep the budget goal, cut out the facts. Keep consideration for budget proposal or cut it out and keep the state impact and then the grid on the bottom.
I think the considerations of budget proposal is a nice concise. You know, forewhole thing, that, that's where my mind would go.
So just get rid of the budget facts, 1, 3, 6?
Maybe add a picture.
Well, I think it would just be nice, like you said, you don't want all these words on it. That information is the same, whereas everything else from the bottom below has, you know, is new information. Especially the state impact on budget proposal. I think that's what we really want to highlight.
Right.
Jean, can you go up to the back page, which is the flyer that people will open? So the front side will have the address and an announcement about the annual meeting. And then the back of that will be, you know, this sort of abbreviation of what this, what the budget is and where the money is going, if you will.
I agree that the budget facts are. Yeah, it's, it's funny to be arguing against too much detail, but I, I think that I don't think people are going to get through it and that they're not going to understand even what F D stands for necessarily.
Or M T S S or H S.
You're right.
I like budget fact. Fact number two, and I'm still trying to figure out what it says.
So I'm getting a sense that there's an interest in the updated flyer information going out, but to streamline it a bit. And primarily focus on how it's, the summary and how it differs from the annual report. That's what I'm hearing.
I think so. I think that's the most important part to get out to people. And it would be nice to have some pictures to kind of break it up a little bit.
Yeah, and reminds people of what we do.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we find the facts, it added, it reduced, it maintained. I think, I think those are interesting to us. I'm not sure they're interesting. I'm not sure they're as interesting to other folks.
Yeah. Not really sure it gives a context, you know, yeah.
Yeah, it's really not enough to give a context and.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe folks should be reading it for other reasons, but I think most people look at information like this to see what's the impact on taxes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay, so you'll still need help putting together the flyer, correct?
If anybody's willing to take a stack home and fold them and bring them back, we greatly appreciate it. Um, I'm not sure exactly how soon. It would probably be next week. We want to get it out because um, early voting starts around the corner.
Will you just send out an email saying that they're ready to go and people can stop in and pick them up?
Yeah, awesome.
Okay. All right, annual board work plan review. Confirm the February 17th uh, P D topic and discussion.
The restorative practices on, and because it's vacation week, um, Megan and the other two who didn't join her after all, were not able to come that week, so we put it beginning of this one. So um, I don't know if you want to follow up on the um, L G B T Q. If you want, or what you'd like to do, it's your, your call.
It's your pleasure, everyone.
One thing I'm hoping to have you do is ratify the teacher tentative agreement. Um, that's assuming the teachers ratify it next week.
Laurie?
Yeah.
Um, the, the item of um. Looking into our, our communications gaps for outreach was something that I brought up. I don't know, it was back in October or November. Um, and there just really wasn't a time for it, so we, the first available time was February, and that's why we kind of slotted it in there.
Yep.
And just to frame up what, what was behind that in my mind. And I, I'm not certain that this is the right time to do it, but what was behind it in my mind was when I look at the two realms that we work in, Jean's seems very fluid. Her communications are regular, they're, they're, they're needed information. They contain a lot of information. The stakeholders are, are interested in seeing. It's relevant, it's operations. So she's got a very good connection with her stakeholders when she communicates, and I think she does a great job of it. When I look at the other realm, which is the board realm, I don't think we do that almost at all. And I'm not sure why we don't, but I don't think we do. And I, I kind of, my purpose was to kind of look at that and try and understand as a group, you know, why don't we, what should we? When I think about new, you know, the prospects of new board members coming into the board, we actually go off and for potential candidates, have a training session to say, you know, as a potential board member, this is what your job would be. Which kind of tells me that if we feel the need to do that, and I'm not saying we shouldn't, but if we feel the need to do that, it kind of indicates that by and large, people don't know what the job of a board person is. Or, you know, what have we done? What do we plan to do? Any of the things that, you know, we're, we're elected officials collecting a paycheck. What do people expect us to be delivering as a board and what are we delivering as a board? And, and if, I guess what I was really hoping was that that would be more of a, like a workshop environment we would do that in, certainly not the best to do in a Zoom setting. But that was really what was behind my thought when I brought that up, and it was back in October, you know, not, not really being, understanding where we'd be in February. But that doesn't mean that's what we have to do. That was just what was behind my thought. If there are other things, you know, the board feels is more relevant, by all means. Again, I do, I do think it wouldn't be as effective a process in a Zoom session.
If I may, the board also at one point asked if Allison Popa would come back to help you with a lot of what you just said, Barry, communications and, and board connections with the community. She's also not available on February 17th because it's her kids' vacations. So she's happy to come back and work with you, but it can't be that, that week.
So it might be best to push that out further. Yeah, if, if it's even something, you know, the board feels they'd like to pursue.
Laurie, we can't hear you.
I think it's all something that we definitely want to do. I think it's just that with COVID, trying for us to figure out how to do that has been difficult. And I think that's why we had, like you said, doing it in a Zoom meeting is almost, it just doesn't have the same, whatever. I don't like Zoom meetings because I can't get any of you to talk. So, you know, and that's what, that's what communication is all about, so. Anyway, I think, yeah. So Barbara, did you have a question?
No, I was basically going to say what you just said, and then I put my hand down, and then you said you can't get any of us to talk. So I thought I'd put my hand back up so that I could, I would say something and make you happy.
Uh huh, you're so funny. Thank you. Bless you.
You're welcome. Yes, it's hard. These Zoom meetings are really hard. We are, we are connecting as best we can, but this is not an ideal situation to tackle any of the things that, as I recall from our in-person meetings, were a little bit easier to, to discuss.
Yeah.
So we just have to hang in there. We'll get through it.
I also appreciated a lot of what Megan said today, and I was kind of relating it to where I think some of our gaps are. And just to be able to be face to face again at some point and have, you know, open dialogue type sessions, I think really it kind of unites the board a little bit. You know, you get a little bit more of a, a sense of other people. Like if I say something that really upsets someone, I'm more likely to see it in person than I am right now, and then at least I'll know, hey, Barry, don't, you know, that's something that upset somebody. But anyway, I, I guess, I guess what I'm feeling is that when we get back to that again, I, I guess it's a more comfortable setting is, is the easiest way to say it and probably more effective.
So Becky's asking the question of should we do an ACEs training? What do you guys think? Should we pull that together that quickly?
Could, could you, I mean, I know what the ACEs is because it got explained to us earlier. What's involved in a training?
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, so Bill, it's adverse childhood experiences, and so it's talking about 10 different bullet points and things that cause trauma to children, and the higher your scores, you know, Megan was saying earlier, the more, or the less resilient you are. So I think maybe if the board had an understanding of what the ACEs are and how it affects kids, that might be really helpful for the, you know, the stuff that Megan was talking about tonight.
Um, Jean, you're now muted.
I know. Who could do that? Because I, I, again, I know I won't have access to school staff, but do you know somebody else who might be able to do that?
I can think of a couple people.
Well, let's put it down tentatively, and then maybe we should have something in, in the backup, just in case we can't get someone for that meeting. Does that sound? Because I think the ACEs training sounds really good. I think, I think having some professional development and for us to understand all of the different nuances that the schools are having to deal with is really eye opening to all of us so that it helps us understand what our role is and how we can help from our standpoint. And I think we're still learning.
I don't think it could hurt, Laurie.
Oh, Kevin, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry, I said, I don't think it could hurt. You know, that it's always enlightening to learn about other people's lives. And, and if it would help us do a better.
Nope, he froze again. Oh, wow. Okay. So I have to say this, it is 8:02. We have two minutes for an exact two hour meeting. So does anybody want to make the motion to extend the meeting for like 15 minutes? So because we are going past our two hour deadline? And then we can keep going? Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
So someone want a second? Okay, Bonnie's seconding. All those in favor? Looks like everyone, okay? All right, so we're extending our meeting for 15 minutes. Barbara, you had a question, and then Bill, you had a question.
Uh, once again, I was actually, I'm not being a smart aleck. What you had said just earlier about the professional development helps us to do our job better. And I wanted to just concur with that. That was what I had been thinking too. I really appreciate all of these opportunities to learn more about what, what goes on and that can help guide us in the decisions that we make to help the, the kids in the district. So it's a great idea.
Awesome. Bill?
Yes, just one thing on a criteria. If we're having ACEs or if we're having some other workshop or presentation or anything,
Yep.
have it, have a predisposition for action and action that influences children directly and puts on a shelf esoteric planning that's necessary at the beginning. But unless we're doing something that affects equity or chat children's needs directly, then we're just really having a philosophical discussion.
Okay. All right, so does anybody have a backup plan that would be something that we could learn about that directly affects kids and would help us in our job of making sure that the schools are running effectively through Jean? Jean, do you have an idea?
Seven deadly sins of equity.
There we go. Do you want to run that, Bill? We can let you be the, the presenter.
I will work with people on it. I, I know where to go on this, but I'm not necessarily the best presenter though.
All right.
But I'd be glad to work on it.
Do you want to do that? Then we'll put that in our, our back pocket in case this doesn't pan out with an ACEs training? Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we will make sure that we have something on the agenda for the 17th, whether it be in an ACEs training or seven deadly sins of equity. There we go. Um, I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report. Jean, anything you want to tell us?
Well, I'll keep it brief because you have it in writing. The couple of things that I would highlight is that yesterday, the Neshabey Search, Principal Search Advisory Committee met. We had received 13 applications. I brought seven forward for the community to, or the advisory committee to look at. They have chosen three candidates. I'm confirming those candidates now. And by the end of the week, I'll get information out to the community. Public interviews, which I hope the board might also attend, will be Tuesday night at 6:00 and 7:00 and Thursday night at 6:00. And all parents and staff are invited to those. In addition, the search advisory committee will conduct afternoon interviews with the, the three candidates. Uh, also, as I mentioned earlier, I am hopeful that the teachers ratify the tentative agreement next week. And if that's the case, then I would probably, it would probably be most expeditious if we brought the three boards together for a brief, a brief meeting. Nothing, nothing has changed from what we informed you of already, so it would be a, a vote to take place the week of the 15th. And I also wanted to point out that the Outer Valley graduation date is June 12th this year. We do not yet know what the parameters will be around graduation. Obviously, everyone's hopeful that the vaccine will allow for more in-person than we've had, but we just simply can't answer that in February.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, so our next board meeting is February 17th at 6 o'clock on Zoom. We'll be doing professional development. And then we also have a meeting on Wednesday, February 24th, which is our annual district meeting, which will also be on Zoom, which is at 6:30. We should probably do a board meeting group evaluation, but I don't, there wasn't one in our packet.
Okay.
So I guess we're going to skip it. Do we need a negotiations update?
I can give you that in public, and actually I can give you, I can give you a link to the, to the evaluation and.
Oh, sure. Why don't you do that? Because I would like to do.
So an update on negotiations is that the parent educator bus driver negotiations took place last night. Becky is part of that committee. I, I think that she might agree that it, it went well. Both sides shared proposals, and there was some early tentative agreement on proposals on both sides. We hope to bring salary information to the next meeting, which is in the middle of March. So it's, it's moving along well, basically.
Good.
I just need one second, and I will share with you evaluation, which you can do if you'd like to together.
Oh, did you send that to my RNSUs?
Yeah. Put the link in the chat so anyone can open it. Okay.
Okay.
It's coming. I do. What is it? Oh my gosh, I do not want to. I have a bite of a fried Oreo.
Oh, those are good.
That's amazing, Ryan. Thank you. Wow. So just so you know, that strawberries and fried Oreos. I realize that makes you all jealous.
I was going to ask you to pass it along from square to square.
I know that.
Can you do that?
That was, that was pretty amazing. I've never had a fried Oreo. Okay, it's in the chat.
Okay, do board members arrive at the meeting prepared to discuss the agenda items? Yes, no, maybe? See, nobody talks.
They're obviously not prepared.
Somewhat. Somewhat.
All right, I would say somewhat. All right, I'm going to say somewhat. All right. Does the board follow the agenda and timeline set in the agenda?
What time is it?
I know. Hey, we're close, we're close.
I'm going to say mostly.
6:04. All right.
Mostly, pretty, pretty well.
Well, we also have the ability to say no, and
That's true.
say yes and keep going.
So mostly yes. I'm going to say mostly yes. Does the board look for ways to engage the community in the future focused work they wish to do? This is a hard one. I don't, right now with COVID and, and Zooming, the, the, trying to invoke anything from the community is hard. But you tell me what you, I mean.
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically. Which is another way of saying no.
Laurie, you're right. It's just not applicable right now.
I think even before COVID, if I was completely honest, I think even before COVID, we weren't, we weren't stupendously great on that. We, we, we did try and reach out at times, but they were more focused when we had a particular task. I think in general, that's an area that we could improve in.
Yep. Okay. Does this board speak up and share a variety of viewpoints? No.
Yeah.
All right, are board members willing to listen to differing opinions? Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Does the board focus its work on reacting to current conditions or are preparing for the vision and future of the district? That I would say yes. Wouldn't you? That's why we're doing all this professional development. That's why we're listening to having Megan come in and telling us what they're doing for, okay.
Laurie, can I chime in?
Yeah, go ahead.
But I, I think I would agree with you in that. I also think we're getting better at this, but we do tend, I think, sometimes to overreact to small situations. You know, 108 parents could be happy and one could be unhappy, and sometimes I think we, not that we shouldn't listen, not that we shouldn't give them an ear, but I think there have been times where we have changed our course based on a very, very limited input. I guess that's another way of saying I think we need to reflect the community's wants and wishes better, not just folks who show up and talk with us.
Okay, I got that. Was the presentation tonight helpful to your work on the board? Yeah, one, two, three. Everyone's saying yes. I think it was. Are there any other comments you wish to share? Surprise, no. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your work tonight. We are adjourning at 8:13 by you guys saying goodbye or signing out. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Goodbye.
Bye.